Six o'clock, the agenda for the regular meeting in council of the city of Clarksville to be held Thursday, March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three at Clarksville Municipal Building, Council Chambers, two twenty-two West Main Street, Clarksville, West Virginia, at six P M.
Will Hyman, Gary Key, Jim Malta Jeff, Jerry Riffle, Wayne York, Vice Mayor Junkins, Mayor Marina.
Here.
This evening, we have our prayer and pledge by council member.
God, we come to you for your guidance, for your help to make us better leaders, to look out over our citizens, all citizens of our state and our country and the world, and just help us, you know, lead and just be good leaders. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Riffle, the minutes of the conference work session of February twenty twenty-three?
Mr. Mayor, for the sake of brevity, I'm going to go ahead and motion to we approve the following minutes. Conference work session, February twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three, special session, February twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, regular session, March second, two thousand and twenty-three, special session, March third, two thousand and twenty-three, and the special session, March sixth, two thousand and twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Petitions, communications, and public hearings, Tommy Lopez wishes to address council concerning the street.
Hi, back to discuss the Spring Avenue project and the issues and problems that have been ongoing. I still have not gotten any communication back from anyone in the city. I did speak to Mr. Police, he did let me know that there wasn't any updated information available. I wanted everyone to know that I did have an independent engineer come and look at the project. You know, it was very obvious in a very short period of time, according to that engineer, the dramatic things that needed to be corrected, including the immediate grading and removing the asphalt of the street so that the drains can be drained correctly. That's obviously a very expensive project to do, and for those of us who have homes that are still in the zone that's being affected, certainly we haven't been given any other remedy to seek recourse. And so, again, just continuing to let everybody know that we've not gotten any assistance, no remedy, no updates, no information. Additionally, I previously stated that I was not in favor of hiring a city manager right now, and I do want to reiterate that for a variety of reasons, including the fact that we've got an election upcoming, and we want to have three or two new people, one new person, whatever, and I think that those people who are elected should be the people, the new city manager, no more, no less. Whoever wins, fine, okay, we've got an election upcoming, fine, that's what this process is all about, okay? Let the people who win pick whoever that it is, no more, no less, okay? But in the thought of getting the best candidate right now, if you were a candidate to apply for this job, knowing that the council wasn't sure, it would be hard for some quality people to say they can apply right now. Once a new council is set, no matter what direction that it is, there will be a direction, potentially other people would have better interest in applying, knowing that there was that surety of council. Lastly, for my behalf, I do have one question, and I don't care what it is, but in the selection of the city manager and moving through this interviewing, what is the plan, you know, the strategic plan? I know it hasn't been updated in a long time, but you know, in the absence of a formal plan that's in place, going to look and see what you're selecting for a manager without having a plan is, you know, something I think that needs revisited when you look at best practices. You know, certainly, we want to identify the biggest thing that we need in the city is schools and residential demolition, okay, which we know. The biggest thing that our city faces is slumming lighthouses, lack of schools, okay? That's what's plaguing us. And so, you know, when you look, if you have a plan that says this is what we need for a city manager because this is our biggest need, you know, then those things kind of fit together. But you know, in the absence of a plan right now, we have a lot of homes and a lot of people that are upset because we need a lot of demolition in our city, we need a lot of partnership in that, and there needs to be a formal plan in place to outline how we can do that. And in the absence of that formal plan, and in the absence of surety of council, no matter who it is, again, I think it's best if we would pause and not make a decision until there's more things that we know in place to pick the best person, no more, no less. Thank you, thank you for your service, I know you didn't file again, I appreciate everything you've done, and good luck to the incumbents who filed, everybody, election time is fun, no more, no less. Whoever wins, you know, let those people move forward. Thanks.
Thank you, Tom.
Jane Mitchell wishes to address council concerning Washington Avenue condemned houses and fires.
Good evening, I wrote some notes because I tend to forget some things sometimes, so forgive me for not making eye contact with you the whole time, but my name is Jane Mitchell, and I reside at four forty-three Washington Avenue. I'm sure you all are aware, or should be, that there were three separate fires involving four separate dwellings in the last two weeks. I believe all of the houses were condemned and without utilities hooked up. As you can imagine, it's very unsettling to live right next to these dwellings. I've spoken to the fire marshal, a code enforcement officer, and the police chief to express my obvious concerns. We have called nine one one several times due to the vagrants repeatedly coming back. In fact, they even arrested someone who was inside the house that was heavily destroyed after the fire. Each of these individuals mentioned were extremely professional and offered to help in any way possible. I'm here tonight to express my concerns to you so that these houses can be torn down and removed immediately. I am sure that there is a process that has to happen in order for these to be torn down, but I ask that each of you put yourself in my shoes. My house was feet away from being burnt down. I can't say enough about our fire department. Unfortunately, it's not up to any of them to expedite the process and remove these houses before someone ends up dying. That may sound a bit overdramatic to you, but until you are awoken by passerby's frantically pounding on your door at one thirty in the morning for you to get out of your house because your neighbor's house is on fire, you can't fully understand how I feel. I watched and prayed for over three hours, and by the grace of God and the work of our fire department, my house was spared. I ask for your prompt attention to resolving this issue so that I can again feel safe and comfortable in my home. Thank you.
Thank you.
City managers report an update.
The manager's office, the budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four is complete. Tax evaluations have been received, and the necessary adjustments have been made. From the economic development assistant, multiple agencies with support letters for congressional directed spending requests. Thanks to Brittany for submitting four requests for congressional directed spending on behalf of the city, one each for the police department, fire department, downtown sidewalks, and the historic preservation of Brownfield. From the police department, polygraph examinations are being conducted on five new police applicants. Four new officers are nearing the halfway mark at the West Virginia State Police Academy. From the city parks, Splash Stone, the water slide repair company is scheduled to be onsite the end of March to begin gel coating the water slides. There is an issue with the field lights at Frank Lorre Field, repairs are underway. The National Park Service has the pickleball court application, and we are hoping for an answer in the next few weeks. From the wastewater treatment plant, the discharge monitoring report was submitted for the month of February with no code violations. The process treated approximately two hundred and fifty-four million gallons of wastewater, and the plant received three hundred and forty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty gallons of septage. The plant brought in a total of sixteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents of revenue from all sources. Main raw pump number one still waiting on a couple parts from Salzer for repair. And the West Virginia D E P was onsite Friday, or onsite on February twenty-third for their annual lab inspection. Everything went well, and the lab has received your certification. From the fire department, all shifts have completed, their E M R classroom training are now in the study phase. Testing will be conducted the last week of March. The testing process has been started for the rank of lieutenant to fill the vacancy left by Lieutenant Jeffrey Rogers' retirement. Structure fires at four forty-five, four forty-seven, and now four forty-nine Washington Avenue, all vacant and condemned properties, no damage reported to the nearby residents occupied at four forty-three. Robbins and Grant Performing Arts, first two weekends in March were very successful. The West Virginia Southern Baptist Youth Conference had eight hundred attendees, plus their youth pastors, and approximately three thousand people came through the doors for the Extreme Talent Showcase Dance Competition. Three events this weekend are scheduled, Friday, the United Way Give-a-Thon, Saturday, the Gianni Russo will perform, and Sunday, the movie The Godfather. And the searchlights are due to be repaired, March twenty-second and March twenty-third. The code enforcement, code enforcement issued nineteen building permits for a total job cost of one hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars, sixteen notice of violations, zero citations, four condemnation orders, seven reboards, forty-two inspections, thirty-two animal control complaints, and four C Click Fix inspections. The Brute Pub Walk Through happened and is awaiting Phase One plans. From Public Works, first week of spring cleanup is ongoing. Call post is ninety percent ready for the new upcoming season. Two trees were cut down on Sandy Boulevard that were deemed danger of falling. Patching potholes with hot mix is now being conducted, and sixteen sewer calls, twelve of which were private. That concludes my report.
Unfinished business, consideration of second reading of an ordinance authorizing design and other pre-construction activities relating to the acquisition and construction of additions, betterments, and improvements to the existing public waterwork system of the city of Clarksville and the financing of the cost not otherwise provided thereof through the issuance by the city of not more than one million dollars in aggregate principal amount of waterwork system design revenue bond, series two thousand and twenty-three B, West Virginia D W T R F program. Not more than one million in aggregate principal amount of waterwork system design revenue bonds, series two thousand and twenty-three C, West Virginia D W T R F program forgivable. Providing for the rights and remedies of and security for the registered owners of such bonds, authorizing execution and delivery of all documents relating to the issuance of such bonds, approving, ratifying, and confirming loan agreement relating to such bonds, authorizing the sale and providing for the terms and provisions of such bonds, and adopting other provisions relating thereto.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second, all in favor?
Don't we have to have a public hearing on this?
Your third one.
Your third one, okay, my fault.
Okay, we've had, moved in second, all in favor? Those opposed?
Consideration of second reading of an ordinance authorizing design and other pre-construction activities relating to the acquisition and construction of additions, betterments, and improvements to the existing public waterwork system of the city of Clarksville and the financing of the cost not otherwise provided thereof through the issuance by the city of not more than two million dollars in aggregate principal amount of waterwork system design revenue bonds, series two thousand and twenty-three A, West Virginia D W T R F program. Providing for the rights and remedies of and security for the registered owners of such bonds, authorizing the execution and delivery of all documents relating to the issuance of such bonds, approving, ratifying, and confirming a loan agreement relating to such bonds, authorizing the sale and providing for the terms and provisions of such bonds, and adopting other provisions relating thereto.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Ayes have.
Consideration of second and final reading and public hearing of an ordinance of the city of Clarksville fixing compensation for poll clerks and election commissioners for the general election to be held in the city of Clarksville on Tuesday, June sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. Notice appeared in the expedited telegram on March seventh and March fourteenth.
I will now open the public hearing, anyone who wants to speak for or against this ordinance may do so at this time. No one wishing to, I will close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Been moved in second, all in favor? Aye, those opposed? Ayes have.
New business, public hearing on proposed budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four. Notices appeared March one and March fifteenth.
We'll open the public hearing for this budget. Anyone who wanted to speak for or against it? No one want to at this time, we'll close the public hearing.
Consideration of approval of the budget for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four in the amount twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four thousand, five hundred and fifty, twenty-one million, eight hundred and seventy-four thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars for the general fund, fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred dollars for the coal severance tax fund, two hundred and fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars for the grease fund, S P R fund, one million, six hundred and twenty-five thousand, three hundred dollars for the excess property tax levy fund, nine hundred and forty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirteen for the financialization stabilization fund, five million, two hundred thousand for the sales and U S tax revenue fund, and one million, three hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred dollars for the Robbins and Grant Performing Arts Center.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Move that we table this for further consideration?
Yep, motion in the second, all in favor of tabling? Aye, those opposed?
Consideration of a fair housing resolution.
So moved. Second.
Been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have.
Consideration of a resolution to adopt the comprehensive plan.
So moved. Second, discussion?
I would just like to thank Mr. Whitmore and all the staff that were involved putting it together. We can learn and grow and do some good things with this comprehensive plan. That's all I got.
Okay, any other discussion? I think we talked about this comprehensive plan at the last meeting, and that might be something that Mr. Lopez was talking about, so we have done that, we're going to move it, put it on the agenda. We have a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have.
Consideration of a resolution appointing ballot commissioners, fixing precinct boundaries and polling places, and appointing election officials for the general election to be held in the city of Clarksville on Tuesday, June sixth, two thousand and twenty-three.
So moved.
Second, been moved in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed?
Consideration of a resolution appointing emergency absentee voting commissioners for the general election to be held in the city of Clarksville on Tuesday, June sixth, two thousand and twenty-three.
So moved.
Second, been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Ayes have.
Consideration of appointment to the parking authority.
Mr. Mayor, I mean, we appoint Mr. Mike Audia to the parking authority.
Second.
Been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Ayes have.
Consideration of appointments to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Mr. Mayor, I move we appoint Mr. Donald Hall and Mr. Tyler Jordan to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Second, been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Ayes have.
Consideration of appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Mr. Mayor, one more time, I move we appoint Ms. Dorothy Parsons to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second.
Been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed?
Council comments?
Change that down there, Councilman Malta Jeff? Oh geez, man. I don't get to go first very often. Thanks, everybody, for coming out, just remember, see something, say something, pick up the phone, dial nine one one, have a good weekend. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Riffle?
Well, you know, say to the woman that came and spoke tonight, sorry that you had to deal with that. I'm sure that's very scary and, you know, it's not something you want to have to deal with. And I know I've had discussions with the city manager, and they are already working on it, as you know, you've had discussions with them. It's something we need to do better at, and I think everybody here and all the staff understand that. And, you know, so stay on us, if you see something, say something, I guess, but, you know, condemn houses, whatever, call us, let us know, you know, keep the pressure on us, and sorry you had to deal with that. My bracket's already done, I don't want to bear everybody else's. First game, Mountaineers lost, so my bracket's done, so I'm not going to be billionaire, so I'll still be up here with everybody else. And that's all I got. Everybody have a good weekend.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilman Moore?
Yeah, I just want to echo what Jerry said, and I'm, you know, deeply sorry that you had to deal with that. I know this condemned structure issue has been a problem of ours for, you know, probably quite some time since we've been dealing with, you know, predominantly the methamphetamine addiction that we have in our city and across our state, too. And I know that even with the new trespassing, the condemned structure law, which was passed in two thousand and twenty, making it an arrestable offense, it is still, you know, when people are still going into these condemned structures, unless it's reported, and we don't know they're in there until after they set it afire, and then we're kind of, you know, everybody becomes affected by that. But with that said, you know, since it's, since it was part of the city manager's report, you know, on the agenda, I just want to ask the city manager, are we, were those structures boarded up?
They'd be secured by owner.
Okay, and when, and when we, when we secure structures, we board structures up, do we board them up by, by code, like international code?
According to code directive, yes, sir.
Okay, I'm just wondering, because, I mean, I, you know, the reason why I ask that because, you know, boarding up these structures are definitely, you know, definitely a deterrent and a barrier, and if we're boarding up right, it makes it a lot more difficult for these structures to be broken into. And I guess there are certain ways to board up structures, and we just, I was just making an increase to make sure that they were boarded up properly, so. Other than that, we, you know, we, of course, had to table the budget because the legislature did pass the twenty percent increase in P E I A, just going to affect our, affect our budget, so we'll probably have, probably a special meeting for that in the future, so that's why that was tabled. But other than that, everybody have a good weekend, and I guess stay warm, because it's going to get cold again, so.
Thank you, Councilman Moore, Councilman Key?
Just real quick, I'm not going to repeat everything they said, I'm sorry for your experience there, but great job by our fire department, houses close together like that, like they are in an old city like this. It really shows what a professional department we have, that they can save nearby structures like that. The only thing I wanted to comment on off the manager's report, I think it's important for everybody to realize, and for people on this council to realize, since I'm not going to be here much longer, nine brand-new officers, that's a big deal, I mean, that's almost a fourth of the whole department. We got to make sure we're taking care of these guys and holding on to them, because now we've made this big investment in them, sending them to the academy, so. That's all I have, man, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hyman?
I'd like to thank the fire department and their swift reaction to the properties on Washington Avenue. It pains me to say that when I came on council in two thousand and twenty-one, a concerned constituent wrote me about those properties on Washington Avenue, and I reported him to, at that time, the city manager that we had, and here we are. So, you know, I got to apologize on behalf of us and the city, and, you know, we dropped the ball. And that's, unfortunately, I can't promise that it's not going to happen again. So I would hope that we can take swift action on these properties on Washington Avenue and any other fire hazard that we have across the city, and and try to have this problem not happen again. I mean, you know, sometimes I get accused of being a Debbie Downer up here, and I take a look around at what we have here in the city, and, you know, it's difficult to say that we're going to be on top of the next issue that comes around every, every time it rears its ugly head, but, you know, we just got to do better. So I'm sorry, sorry that had to happen to you, you know, house fires are scary things, and I wouldn't wish it for anybody, so.
Can I show you a picture?
Absolutely.
Want to talk about scary? Try that at two o'clock in the morning. Somebody beating on your door.
Yeah, it's frightening, dude. Like I said, it was brought to my attention in September, two thousand and twenty-one, and I brought it to the attention of, at that time, the city manager and code enforcement and others, and.
That house belonged to the Spags, that used to be a belt bouncer. And he passed away, give it to his son. And when they boarded it up, I talked to the boy before he did that, and he said he didn't want to do before that, ever have electric, gas, and water. I was walking out before thirty-five, talking to the morning board, talking to these people. I thought they were my neighbors. They were squatting in there for months, then they kind of boarded it up.
Yeah, when it was first, when I first told them about it, I went and took pictures of it so I could report it to the city manager at the time, you know, the scene was unsightly. I mean, it was dead animals, trash, I mean, you know, it was nasty. And honestly, I don't know how they get up in there, but, you know, I've always been told that locks and now apparently boarded windows and doors only keep obvious people out. only keep honest people out. So, you know, we got a long way to go. And, you know, I, I hope we can turn the corner on this and make it a successful resolution for everyone. Not, you know, obviously for you, but everybody else, too.
Yes, I agree. Thank you. I would also like to add, you mentioned that my house wasn't damaged, and we are physically, you can't see any damage, but the fire marshal told me that I needed to get it checked out because of the amount of water that I put onto my stomach. So just, you know, I'm so thankful for everything that they did do, but I'm not actually sure that my house is not damaged. So, thank you.
Like I said, though, it was, you know, a quick reaction from the fire department. I sincerely appreciate that, and I think everybody in the city of Clarksville does. They do a bang-up job. Other than that, have a great weekend, and we'll see you again next month.
Thank you, Councilman. Vice Mayor?
Jane, we've talked about how we want to try to be more proactive instead of reactive in that department. And, you know, it's, it's something that's a work in progress. So I hate that, like, like they said, I hate that that had to... I can't even imagine. I'd be scared to death to, you know, see that, especially with, you know, that close. And, but...
The flames to our bedroom window is closer, was closer than we are to you right now. That's the scary part.
Yeah, and, you know, when...
That's what I'm saying. It's just the amount of traffic up through there. And it's people that you... We grew up in this town. And there are people that I'm seeing, I don't know, but I've never seen them. I don't know where they're coming from. And you know, when they, when they're walking around...
Well, I have to, I have to say this. It's so much better than it was.
I'm saying it's not.
Because there, there were, there were people, our downtown, you couldn't even, for backpackers and for the situation. And we've, we've, we're trying. We're trying.
I'm not saying you're not. We all, we all got to try. It's not just you guys. It's everybody. If we want this town, we better help. We can't just expect you all to do something, and that's not, you know, that's not what I'm saying. I'm just saying, if somebody come up with a plan, let's stick to it.
Okay. Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay. I would like to ask if, since they are burned structures now, does that move that up on that list, Steve, that we can get those structures out of there more quickly?
Yes, sir. Does expedite.
Okay. We don't have any timeframe as we speak?
There's been a conversation with the city engineer and myself to do an emergency order.
Okay. We'd like to get that out of there as soon as we can, which would, you know, we don't want them coming back in and doing, doing the same thing. So if we could get that out, and that's what my question to the city manager is, since it's, you know, there are certain timeframes that we've, we got to wait. And all the burnt structures puts it in a different category that we can go and be more quickly to, to get, get that structure out of there. So hopefully, we'll be able to do that for you guys.
Another thing is not just the older people, it's the kids coming from school. They run down the street there.
Yeah.
I try to run them out so they don't get hurt, too.
But, but anything in the future, if you see people going into a building like that, please, we got a, we got a great police department that will go and check, check that out. And we got, if they're not boarding it up sufficiently, we, we got Public Works crews that will go in to do that. But if you see any activity in there, please be a set of eyes for us and notify us, and we'll get somebody there quickly and respond. We'll try and get that burnt structure out of there as, as soon as we can. The city manager's giving me assurance that they're working on that. So hopefully, they'll get up there and raise that structure, and it won't be a problem for you again. Okay? Other than that, water board, I think we got one more step. We appreciate you coming. We're moving this process along. And hopefully, the next hearing will be the last hearing and be able to get those bonds and get some things moving. So thanks for coming. And, and, and that's about it. I think we're moving forward with the new election. We had folks sign up. There's interest in the city election. I think we had 10 folks sign up for the city election. There's interest in the water board. We have the incumbent and another person sign up for the water board. So hopefully, we'll move this election, and June will be here before you know it. And we'll keep the city moving. But thanks, everybody, for coming out and take the motion.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Been moved in second. All in favor? Aye. We're adjourned.